The money to get a membership or something like that. But if we can do sponsorships, that would be very helpful to those children who may not be able to afford the memberships. Also, the Public Works Committee had their, we had our first committee meeting on the 22nd this past Monday. We talked about fees for handicap parking installations. Also, the field inspector had given some information on fees and what have you. So, we had a nice first committee meeting, and we will schedule another one maybe in about three weeks. So, stay tuned.
And without speaking too prematurely, myself, the mayor, Justin, let me say this right, Feliciano? There we go, I'm getting it right. Madam Hall, Stephanie Hall, we all had a conversation with the Nile Swim Club out in Yade, Pennsylvania, to try to get some conversation started about some swimming safety instruction that we're trying to get in the community this summer and upcoming years to come, as well as some different swimming recreation for our youth in our community. That's something that I feel as though is very important, which is why myself and the mayor wanted to coordinate that outreach, so that way we can, you know, promote safety in our community, as we know we had a tragic incident happen in our own river a few weeks ago. So, I think it's very important that we educate our children, as well as our young adults and parents, because there's parenting courses involved as well on, you know, how to swim and, like I said, bring some more recreation. So, I'm excited about that conversation that's happening with the Nile Swim Club currently. We will be having more conversations with other programs in the, you know, the general vicinity, but I wanted to make the public aware of, you know, us trying to do more as a community to support what we might need for our youth for safety and recreation.
All right, great. I guess it's my turn. I'll just fill in the blanks. They've checked off half my list here. For those of you who travel Edgemont Avenue, you'll see that there's paving going on. It's PennDOT just finishing up some of the state roads that they started last year. So, just be conscious of some traffic pattern changes. And be happy that we're going to get Edgemont Avenue paved all through Chester. It will terminate at Ninth Street, though. So, from Ninth Street to here will not be paved by PennDOT. Another event that went on this weekend, our very, I don't know, institution in our town, biddy basketball, had a very successful banquet this weekend, celebrating the season. There was a tree planting at William Penn Park in celebration of Earth Day. Delaware County Sustainability Group helped sponsor that. I think as many as 50 trees were planted down there. So, we're definitely trying to beautify our parks. And one of the ones that is probably most important to the historic city of Chester is the one where William Penn landed way back in 16-something. I can never remember the date. Anybody can remember? No? Oh, it's, he says right there, 1644. Okay, I'm not sure if that's the same date, but in any case, we're looking to really spruce up that park and make it a destination again. What else do I want to say? As you can see around us, we've got some updates in here. You can hear us better. You can see us better. We have a podium here that has long been needed to be replaced. It's been placed in another location. We felt as though when you guys come to address us with your public comments, you really should be looking at us, because that's who you're addressing and not the audience. So, that's the reason for that. And then our chief of staff will be seated at the table to my left. Our directors will be seated in the chairs on the sides. And generally, we would want to have everybody seated, but with so many of you here today, you can remain standing today. Thank you for mentioning the committee meetings that we've had recently. We want you to know that these committee meetings are livestreamed, so you can join live. The agendas will be, are put on the city website, so you can know what's coming up. You can also attend in person. Budget and Finance Committee, Community and Economic Development, Human Resources, Parks and Rec, Public Safety, Public Works, Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations and Strategy are the committees that will be meeting on a regular basis. Some of the heavy lift that we're doing right now are going through our ordinances. So, many of our ordinances, some of the ordinances date back to the 50s and before. So, a big effort is taking place right now to update our ordinances, and many of the committee meetings will be related to that. Like to welcome back Sean Drum. Welcome. He had a health scare and had to be out for a little while, but really vital to our Public Works and Parks Department. Really, really, really happy to see you back and healthy. That was a scare. I bet. And then I want to welcome our new Director of Human Resources, Mr. Gerald Mack. Just stand up and wave and say hi. There he is. All right, so, anything else you guys think of while I was rambling here?
No.
Okay, good. Madam Clark.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the service agreement submitted by Premium Parking Service LLC to provide temporary parking management services and develop a comprehensive parking plan for the City of Chester. Further, that it does ratify the execution of the service agreement by the mayor for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Further, said agreement is contingent upon the final approval of the city solicitor. So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Benita E. Taylor as a member of the Chester Economic Development Authority, term to expire December 31st, 2028. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, any comments? Madam Clark.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, the City of Chester hired Gerald Mack for the full-time Director of Human Resources effective April 22nd, 2024, for 37.5 hours per week with no benefits and a 60-day probationary period. And whereas, said employment is contingent upon said individual successfully completing a 60-day probation from the date of hire. And whereas, the city is required by law to offer said employee medical benefits after 60 consecutive days of employment, which is completed on June 21st, 2024. And now, therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve. Further, if said employee fails to meet the job expectations within the 60-day probation, said employee will no longer be eligible for the position and will be subject to termination from said position. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, any comments? Madam Clark.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
We have no new ordinances for introduction. We have no resolutions for introductions. In our last meeting, I took the liberty, which I will not take again, of reporting on our committees for committees that had nothing to report. Upon further review, it's important for the chairs of these committees to at least have an opportunity to add anything they'd like to add today with regard to their committees to share with the public. So, we'll start with our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the Budget and Finance Committee met this past Monday in regards to the fee ordinance that we're trying to pass, in regards to all the fees that are associated with all the departments of the city. We did table that discussion again for a month from today, which will be, I believe, April 20th. It's a month, a Monday's month away. And we did that, I'm sorry, May, I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone. And we did that because we need to go through all the fees for every department, and I think it's only fair that each department has at least a week or a week and a half time to thoroughly analyze the fees that they're charging, so that we can come up with a comprehensive plan for the city as a whole. And so, that's the reason being that we tabled that discussion, as well as ordinance that came out, excuse me, December 31st, 1989. We also tabled that one as well, because the numbers for that tax abatement come from the year 1989. And of course, that's not going to be relevant or helpful to 2024. So, we need our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Lethrow, myself, the mayor, and the Finance Department to actually dive deep into those numbers to explain why we're going about those tax abatements and how much we decide to use as far as percentages. So, that was the table, that, excuse me, ordinance was tabled as well. And there's no new news in regards to the Budget and Finance Committee, other than those two tabled. One, ordinance fees, and the second being a tax abatement ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention, I think I kind of jumped ahead in talking about the Public Works Committee meeting this past Monday, but we also had an overview or a report submitted on the ARPA and non-ARPA projects that the city is engaged in. And there are several projects that are near completion. And Mr. Justin, is it Justin?
Which one? Feliciano?
Felici, no.
No?
Feliciano.
Tajir.
Not Tajir, I'm sorry. I keep calling you Justin, I'm sorry. But he gave a good report on those projects that are near completion. And so, just to want to let you know that the projects are moving forward, and we'll have a better detailed report at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Chair Gibson, do you have anything to report for the Community and Economic Development Committee?
No, we have not met, but we are in the works of scheduling a meeting soon after further conversation with Mr. Leitner.
Thank you. And Chair Green, Parks and Recreation Committee.
I don't have anything to report on the Parks and Recreation Committee, but I did meet with, on the Public Works Committee, and that meeting went really well. And I can't really stress this enough, it is extremely important that the community and residents, if you get a chance to come out to these committee meetings, and I know it's something new for the community, but it's also new to City Council. But it's extremely important that we have your input as we go through the ordinances and as we begin to update the fees throughout the city. It's going to be really good that we have the input of the community, so that one day you don't wake up and say, oh, wow, they increased this fee, or, oh, they done changed the fee. Well, it's important that we have your input as we go through this fee structure and as we begin to change the fees. And anything that is going to come before council, we'll talk about it at the committee meetings. And so, it's important that you get a chance to come. And if you don't get a chance to come, I did request that all of our public meetings be livestreamed now. And so, all of our meetings will now be livestreamed, our deliberatives and our committee meetings. So, if you don't get a chance to attend, you will get a chance to watch it online. So, and while I'm speaking, I do want to give credit to Chief Leitner and the rest of the team and all the department heads, because they are working extremely hard to make improvements and to really turn this city around and change the way this city government operates. And so, I believe in giving credit when credit is due. And Chief Leitner, I want to give you credit, job well done, and continue to do the work of the people.
All right, I'm chair of three committees. None of them have met since the last council meeting. And I'm not going to read off the names of the committees, because they're up there on the screen. But we have had meetings with, I have had meetings with the Fire Department in particular on some of the ordinances that we'll be bringing forward. And many of the discussions that are had with regard to Human Resources Administration and Appointments, Rules, Intergovernmental Relations, Strategy Committee, things could pop up at any time, so, but nothing has been, we, none of the three committees that I've chaired has met since the last council meeting. Thank you all for your reports. Up next is a Controller's Report. Quarterly, I'm sorry, quarterly report from our Controller, Ms. Joy Taylor.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. This morning, I'm just going to review a report that was emailed to Mayor and Council, so they are in receipt of it, but I wanted to make sure that the general public was aware of it as well. The city's pension plans get audited twice a year. This audit report that I'm going to read this morning is covering the years, the period of January 1st, 2020, to December 31st of 2022. Just a few of the key findings, the reports are available online on the Auditor General's website for anyone who's interested in downloading them. We can also make sure that they're available on the city's website for you as well, if you would like to download them from there to read more in depth. But just a few of the findings, which Mayor and Council will be working to address with the city's ordinances. Specifically to the Officers and Employees Pension Plan, finding number one was a non-compliance with prior audit recommendations, provisions of benefits inconsistent with the Third Class City Code. The Third Class City Code is also available online for you to read as it relates to what those provisions are for officer and employee members, as well as fire and police members. Finding number two was a partial compliance with the prior audit recommendation, failure to pay the minimum municipal obligation of the plan. On the Police Pension Plan, there was, there were three findings. Number one, non-compliance with prior audit recommendations, provisions of benefits inconsistent with the Third Class City Code. Finding number two, non-compliance with prior audit recommendation, inconsistent pension benefits. Finding number three, partial compliance with prior audit recommendation, failure to fully pay the minimum municipal obligation of the plan. On the Fireman's Pension Plan, there were two findings. Number one, non-compliance with prior audit recommendation, provision of benefits inconsistent with the Third Class City Code. And finding number two, partial compliance with prior audit recommendations, failure to pay the minimum municipal obligation of the plan. The minimum municipal obligation of the plan is set annually, and I'm proud to announce that, number one, we have completed the work necessary to ensure that our state aid comes in timely. Second, the city is doing the best that it can to pull revenue from all sources, including EIT, which was increased a few years ago, which is Earn Income Tax for anyone who's not familiar with what that acronym means. And they are making those payments to the plans as timely as possible. Keep in mind, there's a delay between collection, receipt, and the ability to transfer over those funds into the appropriate plans, but the finance team is diligently working to ensure that they are funding the plans. We haven't had any complaints. And I'm really proud of the work that the finance team is doing to ensure that all of our retirees are continuing to receive their benefits, as well as our Human Resources team. Prior to the hiring of the new director, both Anice and Janelle were working diligently to ensure that medical benefits were being transferred, I should say retirees were being placed on the proper plans relative to their age and eligibility for the varying different medical premiums that are available to our retirees. So, want to also give kudos to those ladies for the hard work that they have been doing. And again, the finance team as well. As we get ready to go into the next quarter, my hope is that I'll be able to report out on the reconciliation of member contributions from 2023. Those are still in limbo right now, due to some complications with determining or dissecting, I should say, some of the data that we're pulling from the software. But my hope is that in the next quarter, we'll be able to successfully report out on reconciliations from 2023 and give a partial update on where we stand for mid-year for 2024. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Any questions, comments from Council?
I do have a, just a quick question. So, for this year, are we, will we meet the minimum requirement for both the police pension and the fire pension?
That's a difficult question to answer at this present moment, but the hope is that, so, and I say it's difficult, because there are past MMOs that we have not fulfilled yet. So, it's kind of difficult to speak to the current MMO when we haven't fulfilled the obligations for the past MMOs.
Okay, and we have to fill those obligations before we can be current on the current obligation?
Well, yes. It looks better if you work on your old debt before you start paying on your new debt. And I say debt, it's not a debt, but I'm using that as an example. But the city, again, we're doing, the finance team, the receivers team, and you can catch updates on his website as well, they're doing the best that they can. When revenues come in, they're applying them. And that's what's keeping the plan sustained. But we do have past municipal obligations that have to be met, and those exceed some of the current MMOs.
Thank you.
By a few million.
That's a good answer.
By quite a few million.
That's a very good answer. So, if I were to try to add to that, is the amount that we're paying is based on what would be due today, but when we pay, it applies to the previous year's debts. But we are paying on time now. Can I answer your question? Okay. I will just remind everybody that she just read results from an audit. Nobody likes to be audited, but we're required to be audited on pensions. And just be reminded that it was for a period 2021 through 20-
22, January 1st of 20, excuse me, January 1st of 2020, up until December 31st of 2022.
There we go.
So, the audit took place in '23, and then we get, we got the findings at the beginning of '24. So, that's how that cycle works. So, we'll be coming up, preparing in '25 for the '23 to '25 audit.
Yes.
And then in '26 is when we'll read off those findings, which my hope is that some of the non-compliance items will be addressed by then, as well as some of the prior recommendations, because these are ongoing things that the Auditor General's office has requested the city to improve on or make the changes, the necessary changes, not only to the contracts, but also to the city's ordinances to ensure that that non-compliance is addressed. But that's the work of Council.
So, that's very important to understand, too, that, you know, these audits are reporting on activity that occurred several years prior to now. The hope would be that corrections have been made since the end of that audit period, but the audits really help us adjust and make corrections moving forward. One of the things that you'll hear in just about every section of that audit is the term inconsistent with Third Class City Code. We'll probably see that in every audit, even if the audit was perfect, because the city has its own ordinances, but to the extent that we aren't looking good on an audit, it's always good for the auditors to fall back on the Third Class City Code as a basis for how all work and, you know, how we should operate. But that is not a reflection that what we're doing in-house, in terms of our ordinances and how we're managing our pensions, is wrong. It's just not consistent with the Third Class City Code. Excellent report, though. I really appreciate your efforts, your diligence, and your clarity. Next, we have our Chief of Staff report. He's going to report on a department quarterly report. I believe you should be prepared for 10 to 15 minutes. Is that correct, Chief?
We'll see.
Okay, we'll see.
We'll see how that works out.
All right, so, it will be displayed as a PowerPoint presentation that you can follow on the screens above.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and all the citizens that are in the audience as well. So, this is going to be a quarterly report that comes from the Chief of Staff, but it is first and foremost a collaboration of all the departments. Before I even go into this, today's an example of what collaboration looks like. Today's an example of how council and administration works together. So, just as they gave us accolades, I want to read your typical and tell you that this council body that's up here has been supportive and has been really working with us as a staff to actually start to change things and move things forward. I've been doing this for about 17 years, and I would tell you that this body, this council body right now, is one of the first bodies that I've seen that actually has really dug in and started really getting involved with the ordinances. So, I want to tell you guys thank you for your support and your eagerness to really want to look at these ordinances and really work with the staff, so thank you as well. I also want to say to the staff that's here, as Councilman Green said, the staff is working hard. The staff is in the audience, they're behind me on my left as well. I know I drive them a little nuts and really pushing them, but we are at a point right now that you see the changes that are happening, and we always, always tell them, we got to fix our own house first. So, there's things we're working on internally, and you will see that through this quarterly report. But I want to commend the staff and tell you guys thank you. You're doing a great job, and there's still more to come in the second quarter, so don't get too relaxed. But thank you guys for everything that you've been doing. So, this first quarterly report here is just going to be a summary of the various departments of what we've been doing, only in the first quarter. This is not going back previous years, it's only from January, February, and March. So, I'm going to start with the Health Department. I don't have the Health Department slides up here, but just to give you a highlight what happened in the first quarter with our Health Department, they had vaccine clinics every month throughout the city. They've done a total shots for residents in the first quarter of about 87. Blood pressure screenings in the first quarter, they completed about 75. They continue to conduct and host and manage the Health Bureau or the Health Department Committee meetings to discuss health, community health, working with the county and their Health Department, and dealing with animal bites, dealing with communicable diseases. And as many of you know, some of the major diseases within the City of Chester are diabetes and cancer. They're working internally with the staff, but they're also working with the county as well to address these issues and provide training, provide opportunities for educational seminars, for our citizens to take advantage of that and understand that these are some of the leading causes of death per 100,000 within the City of Chester. So, when these trainings come up, Ms. Rosetta Carter's working hard to really make sure that these trainings are available. And I would encourage you, when these trainings are there, that you encourage your neighbors and the citizens, especially if you know there's leading causes of death here with diabetes, cancer, and things like that, that they participate in the training. So, we're going to go over some operational highlights and some of the executions that are happening, starting with finance, or I would say, our grants. Right now, the City of Chester, we have a grants riot. We have currently going on with that. But overall, the city itself, we have about $7 million in grants that she's currently managing right now. But this is only the first quarter, and this is what we wanted you to get a snapshot of what's happening in the first quarter. ARPA, that's the American Rescue Plan Grant. Many people have talked about that. You know that we received about $30 million overall. What we have currently listed, what we call- What we have currently listed, what we call obligated, is about 16, 16 million, 15, 15.5 million that's obligated. And what we have unobligated is about 14 million. When we say unobligated, we don't mean that that money is available. The money is all being budgeted for. When we say obligated, as you know, that by the end of this year, we have to have the money under contract. So we have, when you see there on the first line, projects not started. There's projects that are in the ARPA budget, there's 12 of them. They're in the process of being started. We do have to send these projects out for bid, but they're in the process of doing that. We have less than 50% of the projects that are completed, and about the other 50% that are completed. When we say, again, I just want to reiterate the fact of the obligated funds. Again, these projects are there in the budget, but we just haven't gone under contract yet. When we talk about finance, our Finance Department, as Ms. Taylor referenced, the Finance Department's been working diligently on really trying to reconcile our books, doing monthly reconciliations, which we're getting better at that. This is a list of the, the cash accounts that we have. You can see the cash that's in here from January, February, and March. But what I want to bring your attention to is at the bottom of there, where it says the real estate tax that are past due. We have roughly about $2.5 million of real estate tax that are past due. Library tax past due is about $109,000, and the rubbish fees past due is 3.5. But what you also need to be understanding here is that 1.3 million dollars, this does not include interest and penalties of past due taxes. So with that, so with that being said, can you still hear me? Okay. With that being said, again, when you talk about the financial situation of the city, we are doing the best that we can from the Finance Department is making sure that we're doing real-time data. They're still working within our system, and as I expressed earlier, we're working internally with really utilizing our internal software system to manage the budget and manage the finances correctly. We want to get to a point, and this is one of the things we have as our goal, is get to the point where we can actually have this information real-time on the website for the citizens to see. So work with us, give us time, but the Finance Department is working tirelessly with our system to get this in place. This is our revenue that's coming, coming in. As Ms. Taylor talked about revenue, I'm not going to go through all of this, but this gives you an overall snapshot of where we're at year-to-date. Sorry about that. Where we are year-to-date with the revenue that has come in. Our expenditure is going to be broken down into two slides here. Here's the first two slides, or the first slide. Again, this is giving you an idea of what we've been expending, again, year-to-date, in the different areas, from the different departments. As you can also see here, we're trying to break it down by departments. We want every department to be able to manage their budget. Again, this is a work in progress. We're refining this each day as we go through, but this is a early snapshot of what it looks like year-to-date. And then it goes into the Police, Fire, and our other departments as well. Again, I won't go into it, because we can talk finances and budgets and all this for hours, but this, again, is a quarterly snapshot of what each department is looking like at the present time. Moving into our Fire Department. Fire Department here, again, I won't go through each, each line item, but it gives you a snapshot here of major incidents that have happened within the Fire Department, from building fires to vehicle fires, motor vehicle accidents, and assists with EMS calls. Fire incidents from January to March 31st. You can see there's about 166 EMS calls and false alarms, 215. When we talk about false, false alarms, I, I do want to reiterate this fact here. False alarms, it is important that we really push with our, our commercial businesses and as well as the residents. Having proper smoke detectors, having proper notification with your alarms. But this is time that Fire Department has to, again, move out, go to someplace, and it's a false alarm. Again, we're not saying that we don't want to do that, because again, it's still better, better be safe than sorry. But you need to understand that fire just doesn't respond to fires. They respond to all types of incidents here. So we call them the All Hazmat Team. But here's, again, a short breakdown of what has happened only in the first quarter. So it looks like about 613 incidents that they've responded to from January to March. Also, some things that have happened with the fire, they've gone through a renovation in their Station 82. As Council has talked about, and Council, as you know, we're going through the ordinances, so the Safety Committee. There will be some new ordinances that will be brought to the Committee, as well as some requests to repeal some of the old ordinances. Some staff changes, Safer Grant, the Safer Grant is what allows us to hire some additional firefighters. We've been fortunate that they've extended our Safer Grant, so we have that, so we can still have additional firefighters on staff. This may not be much to most of you, but Safety Committee is an important part for us. We don't really focus on the Safety Committee too much. And Council, I'm bringing this to your attention because it is important for our Safety Committee. Our Safety Committee has met every month this, this first quarter. Some things that they are looking at is they're reviewing improvements on the safety policy. Safety policy, which I will get into a little bit later here in this presentation. It's not just about the fire extinguishers, this first aid kits, AED, AED kits. It's also about workers' comp, it's also about safety for the employees that are working within the building, training, education, safe operating procedures for our Public Works and our Parks Department, and also community, communication and engagement to make sure that we're expressing the importance of safety. You know, when we have employees get injured, they're out, and that decreases our work staff. So the Safety Committee has really stepped up their game this first quarter. The plan is they're going to be offering a first aid training, I think sometime in the next month. They're trying to get first aid training available for the staff. We have these beautiful AED kits on the wall, but if people don't know how to use them, and we need to get people trained on that. So Safety Committee's actively involved. When we talk about that, like I said, I said I would tie this into, here's where we're at with the employee status. From our HR Department, we've had new hires. Roughly, we've had 22 hires. This is including all the departments, from Police to Public Works, to Parks, and Internal City Hall. We've also been working since last year on onboarding process. We're continuing to refine that onboarding process for the employees. So HR's been doing good at that. Six out of the seven employees that have started this first quarter have been onboarding and gone through our onboarding training process. The other thing you will see right below there, the other graph there is our, our terminations from voluntary to involuntary to other, first quarter. What you're seeing there is we have roughly about, roughly 10 or so that were voluntarily, voluntarily left and moved on to other, other opportunities. And we have roughly about two that were involuntary. When we say other, that's, I think we had one retirement that took place as well. And I think that was in Police, right? Retirement, yeah. Workers' Comp, we have 11 individuals that are currently on workers' comp. We have one, is that correct? One that's on harden line? Three, three on harden line. One, okay. So we'll have to update our, our numbers here. But we do have, no, I'm sorry, 10, 10 on harden line, there we go. 11 on workers' comp, 10 on harden line. We can discuss that further in detail, but again, that's what our current staffing is. If we have a staff of 259 total, we have 11 that are out on workers' comp. Moving into our Building Standards Safety, Community Economic Development, or LNI. Here's where we are with our, our total numbers of permits. Roughly over 150 residential permits that are open. We have roughly about 50 or so that are closed, and we have about over 100 that are pending. That's on the residential side. Commercial, our commercial permitting is a little slow as of now, but it's going to start picking up. This is about the time things are starting to pick up for permits. When you look at the inspections, we have roughly, this is for our Systematics, our rental registration program. There's about 531 inspection for pre-sales. From a systematic standpoint, there's about 120, I'm sorry, Systematics, we have about 531. Pre-sales, we have about 56 or so that are scheduled. Our permitting, our rental registration department, when you're talking about these inspections, they do get them scheduled. But at the same time, the per, the inspection just is, you do the inspection, but every time the inspection happens, it doesn't always get complied on the first inspection, which means that it goes into a reinspection, and sometimes it could be three or four inspections, re-inspections. So when you hear the constituents talk about that, we're trying to make sure, and we're really working with our inspectors, to make sure that when they go through the initial inspection, that let's be smart about doing that reinspection. And we really want to encourage the, the owners of the property, before you schedule this reinspection, make sure that you're, you're ready for it. Because that initial cost of the rental registration includes a reinspection cost. Anything after that reinspection, that initial free reinspection, it is an additional cost. So we really want to work with the residents and the owners of the property to make sure that they're prepared for the, for the reinspection. Registration data, let me be, before I jump into that, the next column of the graph you see there is a magistrate hearings. We're starting to track this more so than we did in the past. When they, we don't get compliance with the inspections, we do try to work with them. If they don't comply, we take them to the magistrate. We're doing a better job in tracking this, but as you can see, we have over 55% of them that we've taken have closed. However, we've only, we're not looking for the fines, we're also looking for the compliance of the property. But even after they go to the magistrate, they may put a fine on them, and you can see with the numbers that are fined, but it doesn't necessarily comply the property. So this is just some data right now, it's really being refined, but we're starting to keep track of that as well. This is important to you as council, because as we keep track of the magistrates and what's happening in those magistrates, we want to bring that information to you so that you can help with addressing that with the elected officials, the judges, and the magistrates, to help us gain compliance on these properties. Registration data, I really want to bring this to your attention as well. We talked about who owns these properties. We are still refining the data as we go through it. But in Chester, you see, there's about 1,400 that are property owners in Chester. When I say NPA, which is not in Chester, that's about 1,500 that are registered, that are, again, in Pennsylvania, but not Chester. And you can see the other numbers from there, from New Jersey to New York and to Delaware and other states. So you can see the number of reg, property owners that have these rental properties. This is what the data looks like of these people that are, again, owning these properties or not local. Like I said, this is our first-quarter report. We are still in the process of utilizing our system to refine this data, to have it as more accurate as, as accurate as possible. Public Works, Public Works, as you know, they have the window downstairs. They have about 250 walk-in visitors within the first quarter. These are some of the issues that come up in the window when people come up to, to Public Works to address. These are some of the inspections that they deal with, handicaps to dumpsters, to street opening, and curb and sidewalk. This is the data, the number of permits that have come in. I believe these numbers are low, because as we go through the city, we know that there's more people doing work out there than what's showing. And I know darn well there's more than 13 dumpsters out there in the street. So we can only catch, I know our inspector that we have in Public Works is doing the best that he can when he's out there to catch some of the violators. But this is what we've actually had in the first quarter, that actually came in for permits. The other thing we're doing from the departments is trying to really collaborate together with the departments. So when we see, so when we talk about the rental registration inspectors, and we just now, we're trying to utilize the system so the system can, they, each department can cross-communicate. So if an inspector's out there and they see something that's not right, or they're going to inspect, and they see there's a dumpster, they're actually coordinating now with Public Works with their inspectors. So the inspectors are doing a great job of communicating with each other to make sure that they're all seeing the same thing, and that if there is something that's out there, they want to, they're calling back to make sure there's a permit for that. So they're doing a better job at that. Again, permits, as you can see, there's a break, I might have had that twice. Wasting recycling and the tonnage, this is an interesting data point here. I want to refine this as well, we want to look more into this, but you see the tonnage. JP Mascaro's tonnage is showing 2718. And our Department of Public Works tonnage is showing 2902. Interesting, especially when Mascaro was doing our pickup. But I, I, this is the numbers that were provided of what we were able to gather. But we're going to dig a little bit more into this just to confirm what that tonnage, and if that's correct. But I did want to put this up there, based off what we've discovered. But I wanted you to see this as well, so that way it's on your radar. But we really want to dig, dig more into this. Moving to our Police Department, I'm not going to go a lot into Police, just the high numbers here. You can see the total incident reports. They've handled about 7,453 incidents, and this is the breakdown from January, February, to March. And she's saying, what are these incidents? Here's a breakdown of what some of these incidents are. You have the Part 1 crimes from January, February, and March. And then Comish has broke this down even further, based off homicides, assaults, burglary, robbery, and vehicle thefts. These numbers, again, I will make sure you have these slides for your review to dig more into this, but this is just a high-level overview in the first quarter of what Police has accomplished as well. Moving to our Planning and Zoning Department. Planning and zoning, as you know, it's gone through some changes. We have Ms. Joan Mill now that is working with you all. Ms. Kim Pendergardner has moved over to become the zoning supervisor. We just now hired a zoning officer, I believe he's here, where's he at? There he is. And just started last week? Monday, this Monday? You're like our veteran already. So he just started, so his role, and I, I want to bring this up here, even though it's not in the first quarter, but his role will be also out there as well as enforcing the zoning ordinance. He'll be working in tandem with the other inspectors out there. But what's happened so far in the first quarter from the zoning hearing, there's been one zoning hearing, board hearing, as you're aware. The Planning Commission, there was one review. We had 12 projects that were approved by rights, and we're still on the search for a planning director. We also brought in our, as you all know, you approved the contract for the engineering firm, and... and David Schwartz is right here in the front. He's been serving as our engineer. Uh, and they are here today as well, just to be a part of this. But they're also working, they're gonna be working with Kim, uh, and, and Public Works on really refining our, our plan review process. Uh, when our plans get submitted, the entire process. So they're here today, they're looking at that. And there's some things that we gotta get caught up on in the first quarter, but the engineering firm is here, and they've been working diligently with our planning and zoning department to get that process refined. IT, as you all know, you can see the changes in here. Uh, this is a precursor of what we're planning for in the future. Uh, our mic systems are better. Uh, our visual aids here. Uh, so IT Tracy has been really working with getting our infrastructure together. But more importantly, as you all know, we've been hacked several times, so our infrastructure is being worked on. Uh, when we talk about the domain migration, this is one of the things that we talked about in reference to going from a dot com to a dot gov. First quarter, we got approved for the dot gov. Uh, we are in a process of getting that migration to take place. All the equipment for the network upgrade has been ordered, and it's slowly starting to arrive. You see that, that's why the gates and stuff are locked in certain areas, 'cause the equipment is starting to arrive, so we can start the, the migration and the network upgrade. One of the other things he's done as well is that he moved our server room. So now our server room, it's, it's not completely done, but it's the beginning process for when a new equipment comes in, that we can start building that internal infrastructure, uh, to enhance not only the domain migration, but also the security system as well. Uh, he's done a great job in cleaning out the old badge system, revamping that. That system is over thirty years old. We can't completely do that migration until we get the infrastructure built internally, but he's cleaned it up enough that it's keeping us, it's, um, we can keep our fingers crossed that it won't crash on us right now. So that's where we're at from the security badge process. And also, as you know, from a security standpoint, there are some internally wiring that has to be done. He's got the, the contract or the quotes together for that to, again, start that entire migration to take place. Have a mis-titled on this slide, but this is the actual ARPA breakdown of projects underway. Uh, as you can see, there, there's quite a few projects that are underway here. Uh, I'm not gonna go into all of this here, but these are a list of all the projects currently that are part of the ARPA process, and it tells you the amount of the dollars that are allocated for this. And this is just another breakdown of the different projects in detail of the previous slide that was there before. So in essence, uh, I can't cover, I mean, we've covered just the basic high levels of what's been happening in the first quarter. There's been a lot of moving parts. Uh, again, as we go through these changes, it's requiring the staff to change as well. We looked at adjusting some of the staff members. We've had some staff members move to different locations. Uh, we've also brought on some additional staff as well. But this is what's happened in the first quarter as a snapshot and overview. So at this point in time, um, I will end the presentation at this point. If there's questions, I'd be, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council? Comments?
Um, I do just have a question. Um, you listed, I believe it was two-plus million or something with completed projects. Um, what are the current completed projects, um, for ARPA? And the second question would be, um, thank you for that, um, finance report or expenditure list. It's the first time I've seen one since I've been here, so. Um, but on it, I seen there was a special events fund with a hundred thousand-plus dollars in it. What fund is that? And what exactly is listed as special events? Or what is that fund to cover?
Okay, so let me ask you your first question first. If you look up on, uh, on your slide there, this is what's showing completed. Actually, no, this one, this shows you what's greater than fifty percent or less than fifty, fifty percent completed. Um, but I do have a list of the completed projects, and I can get that to you. I thought I put it on here, but I didn't. Um, as far as the special event fund goes, the special event fund, that was a fund that has been around for a while. Um, that, some of that special event fund is where we took some of the funds for, where we talked about for council's use. Uh, that's also where we're using the funds to pay for the, um, the fireworks. Uh, the fireworks, and I believe that's also Mother's Day. There might be some expenditures that come from Mother's Day. But we haven't really defined what that fund was. That was a fund that was just a lot of, previously, it was when fundraising took place, that those funds went into there. Uh, but we are looking at how do we really define what that fund can be used for.
Okay, you have a history, yeah, you have a history.
So the special events fund was originally created for special events taking place from public affairs. So the ramble was funded out of there. Uh, the Mayor Scholar's Awards Dinner was funded from there. Um, special events such as Fourth of July, any events that we held in the park for the public, those funds, that fund was created so that fundraising efforts could be funded to that particular account and dispersed to city special events in particular.
Okay. So has that money been, um, all of it has been allocated? Or is it just some of it been allocated?
Just some of it.
And I would also add that though the money is there on paper, it may not have actually been the full amount obligated to that particular account for a project, because as you know, in the past few years, we haven't had a ramble. So there was no reason to, or Chester Fest, as we renamed it. So there was no reason to allocate additional funds towards that, um, particular account, because we knew that we weren't going to be expending those funds from that account, or we could circulate them somewhere else to another department that may have needed them.
And this also ties into when I was telling, talking to council before about, while we're looking at these accounts, and we really need to put policies and procedures, like we, you guys passed that one policy on, uh, on the, on the account. Some of these accounts, as we're starting to really dig into them, we need to put policies behind what, what these accounts are for, what they can be used for. Uh, and again, like I said, we're refining these as we go through it, and finance is pulling these accounts together, and we're consolidating the accounts, but also really putting policies on what these accounts can be used for.
Thank you.
Will the council be able to get a copy of your quarterly report?
Absolutely. I will, it would be in your inbox, and the public, it will be posted on the website, and it will be in your inbox, um, by the end of this council meeting.
Thank you.
I'd just have a few comments.
And, and, I'm sorry, one more thing. The, you will start receiving a monthly finance report as well. That will be coming to you monthly. We're just, I, again, I ask you guys to bear with us. We're trying to refine it. I, I'd rather us take a little time to refine it a little better before we get it to you, because like the questions you're asking, I wanna have answers to them. Uh, so what are we in now? I'm gonna forget what month we're in, April? So you'll have your first one in May, your first actual, um, budget finance report in May. It won't be budget to act, that's some of the issue. We're really trying to work on the budget to actual. And that's what I was trying to really push with our finance department and really help everybody understand. That's why we have to utilize our system, our admin system, to really make sure we're doing real, live, monthly reconciliation, putting the information in. It's not just on finance, it's with all of our departments. We have to start utilizing the system, because the system's only gonna output what we put in. And if the departments aren't utilizing the system like they should be, you're not getting good data. Uh, so we're working on the backend really hard to really make sure that departments utilize the system. Uh, but it won't be a budget to actual. I know the receiver's been pushing us hard to get this budget to actual done. Uh, it's, it's all hands on deck right now to really make sure we get this done. But you're gonna get a, you're gonna get, uh, a breakdown of it, but it won't be the budget to actual.
When can we get the budget to actual?
Soon as we get the system, w, soon as we can get the system functioning, that we can get it for you.
So the report that we'll get will be an expenditure report?
No, it's gonna, it's gonna show you the expenditures, the revenue. Just what you saw me present today, that's a precursor of what you're gonna get. I'm work, we're working on it, that's the, the best I can give you. We're, I, I hear it weekly from the receiver. Uh, he's, he's on me about it. Um, we, we are, I'm doing the best that I can to get the system working, to get that for you guys. Even for the departments. I, I know Councilwoman West and I talked about this last year. Uh, I, I wanna get it to a point where you actually have access, that you can go in yourself and just go in and see what each department actually has. We're just, we're not there yet. I, I would say we're close. Uh, I don't wanna give you, when I say close, I would say seventy-five percent there. Uh, the goal is, we, we, we wanted it done first quarter. Uh, I would say that I'm.
It's important.
It, it is.
It is extremely important. I'm, I'm the councilman, I have no idea what the finances are here. The what, no idea what check has been written, what check has been cashed, what expenditure has been spent in this city.
Right.
And so it's extremely important that this council get, get that. And the receiver too.
Yes.
You know? And the city controller.
It's not, yeah. I, I agree with you a hundred percent, and the staff can tell you, I, I expect them to know their budget. I expect them to know what they've expended, because it's not just on council, it's not just on the controller. The department should know what they're, if they're gonna put together their budget, they should know what they have, what they've expended, and also they should know their revenue. So it's, it's a need, not just for the department, for you guys, it's for the department, for the receiver, for the constituents. Uh, I just, I can't produce something that we don't have. Uh, we're, like I said, we're about seventy-five percent there. Uh, I would say we wanna have it done by the, by the second quarter. I will do all I can to push to make sure we get it there. But in the meantime, we're gonna get you, like I said, what I presented today is a precursor of what you'll be getting monthly. That's as close as I can get for you right now.
So all of this information is gonna be housed in Edmonds?
Correct.
And then, then when will the training ha, happen for each department? 'Cause I know there are only a few people who have been trained on Edmonds, and not everybody knows how to use it, so.
That, that, once we get it operational, we will get the training scheduled. Uh, so there's no need to try to schedule training for Edmonds training until we get that, that, that working. Because what it is, is nothing more than a reporting system. You can go in and just pull a report. But until we, we understand the backend and we have it working, I, I, I would say the, the training will take place shortly after that. I, I, council, I, like I said, I, I know it's important to you, it's important to us, it's important to the receiver. Uh, I, we're just, we're working the best we can to get this fixed.
And I have no doubt that you aren't working the best that you can.
I know.
And that's not my issue, but just trying to get, you know, a gauge on when things are gonna happen.
I will tell you that I'm, I'm committed to doing what we can to make sure it happens in the second quarter.
Thank you.
So maybe at the second quarter overview, I won't, we'll actually have it. Uh, so that's the plan, by the second quarter overview. You, you should have, if not the perfect product, a product. Does that sound like a, okay, answer?
I'll take.
That's the best answer I can give you right now.
Thank you.
All right. That was a lot, thank you very much, excellent report. I will say that the frustrations that Councilman Green has are the same ones I had when I came on council, like what budget to actual, something as simple as that? There didn't seem to be an appetite to get us there, but as you can see, the work is being done. In running for mayor, my number-one platform item that I couldn't say publicly, but was number one in, in, in my book, was fixing City Hall. And as you can see through this first quarter report, you kinda see where we are, where we're going to, and, and excellent report. Couple of things that stood out to me in the report was, uh, uh, ten percent of the, ten percent which represents seven million dollars, which represents ten percent of our overall budget is, is past due with regard to revenue. We're, we're seven million dollars behind what we should be taking in. That's pretty significant. Uh, Safety Committee, I think, is very significant as well. It's been one of those efforts here in City Hall that really hasn't been consistent. But when the Safety Committee is running on all cylinders, it reduces sick time amongst our employees, because the Safety Committee is going to be putting out projects to make sure that our, uh, employees are receiving the best care, the best advice, the best diets, the best. All that information is in an attempt to reduce sick time, which, again, saves us on our budget. It, when we have a healthier workforce, our health insurance costs go down. That, again, saves us money. Uh, one of the things that really stood out to me from the permit piece was the number of Chester residents that own properties or that are registering properties. Uh, it was a relatively low amount compared to the combined numbers of people who own properties in this town residential that are living in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York, and other places. I constantly hear from you out there that say, you know, gentrification is coming, what is, what's stopping it? Uh, I think what's, what, what we can't dismiss is the fact that not enough Chester people own Chester properties. There's nothing that we can do as a city to stop anybody from coming in town and buying up land, buying up properties, bringing in businesses. We have to get more locals, if that's your intent, to do the same. And just the optics of the presentation itself, I think you used every tool in the book. I love chart science. I believe you cannot manage what you can't measure. And sometimes it takes a bar chart, a pie chart, a graph, that's a 3D bar, uh, tables, spreadsheets, whatever it takes to present the data in a way that we can digest this, digest it, and make decisions upon it is the type of, uh, direction we wanna go. I have to say, this council asks a lot of questions, and we really love that about them. Uh, nothing, nothing gets past them. And that's a welcome change from, you know, the council I was on previous to this. So, yeah, yeah, that's worth clapping. The, these guys don't miss a beat, so let's, let's keep it up. The type of data that we need to make decisions is the type of data that you just saw in the last fifteen minutes. And I'm joking on the fifteen minutes, of course. But thank you. That's a quarterly report, you will see it, uh, online for those of you who can't see it live. I understand that, you know, the presentation does not show online for those of you who are viewing, so it might have been a little difficult to follow, but please, uh, look at ChesterCity.com. This PowerPoint presentation will be there, as well as the agendas are on. So I understand, I gotta comment just while sitting up here, that some of the things that I've mentioned that are on the agenda, uh, that we refer to on the screens in front of us, which are convenient for us to see here, is not displayed on the live feed. So you can all, also pull up the agenda and read along with us while you're watching the live feed. Where are we now?
Can I just, really quickly? Um, in the report, you guys seen what the police department and the fire department do. So they respond to hundreds of calls. Um, and so I really wanna commend Commissioner Gretzky, Commissioner Sherrill, the police department and the fire department for all the work that you guys do. You guys put your life on the line every day for our residents, and I really, really wanna thank you and commend you for all of the hard work that you all do. So thank you.
I believe we're up to public comment time. We're labeling that good and welfare, I love it. Has everyone who wants to speak signed in? Can I see the list, please? It's like we have a long one. Maybe not. Today, we'd like to welcome our receiver to the meeting, Michael Doury, and his chief, VJ Kapoor, who's, oh, you wanna clap for them? Sure. Mr. Kapoor is number one on the list. Okay. Go ahead.
So three minutes, uh, uh, good at, well, good morning to you, mayor and members of council. Uh, I am here on behalf of the receiver to talk about the issue of, uh, minimum manning and. and recently in the newspaper, and a directive by the receiver to have the Fire Department be running at its contractually mandated twelve firefighters, as opposed to thirteen. I know this resulted in a Facebook post, as well as a news article in the Delco Times, and what I'd like to do here is talk a little bit about what was done, a little bit of the history, and to put some of this in context. So, yes, the receiver, a couple of days ago, did direct the Fire Department to begin running at twelve minimum manning, as per the collective bargaining agreement. When the receiver first came here, the Fire Department was actually running at eleven, and over the past couple of months, we noted a, noted a pretty big spike in firefighter overtime. We were not aware that the city had actually moved to a thirteen minimum manning, and after a meeting with Commissioner Shirley last week, we understood that that's when it happened. The issue with this is simply one of funding. Right now, the 2024 projection for firefighter overtime is triple what has been budgeted, based on what's happening now. If you have a lower minimum manning requirement, or higher minimum manning requirement, it's gonna result in additional overtime, and simply, the city cannot afford it. To kind of put this in a, in a broader sense here, we have, what keeps us up at night, in addition to kind of what goes on day-to-day, is next year. As we have said several times, the city runs into a fiscal cliff next year. The SAFER grant runs out, which is funding eight firefighters right now. The city does not have the funding for those additional eight firefighters. The ARPA return to work and revenue replacement dollars, the ability to use those run out at the end of the year. The city faces a fiscal cliff next year, and our concern is the ability to actually have city operations continue. We're concerned about layoffs, we're concerned about service cuts. What we would like to be able to see is, is what Chief Leitner has presented here, a continued improvement in city operations. And the city simply cannot afford to spend money that it doesn't have. I know that is a difficult situation, I know that's not something necessarily the council, or residents, or the firefighters want to hear, but that's the reality. And so, the, you know, the issues that we have here are not with the Fire Department. It is, it is one of, it is one of funding, and we think it's important to kind of put that out here. The city is in Chapter Nine bankruptcy. The bankruptcy process is moving painfully slowly, I need to say that. And unless we get this, these issues fixed by the end of next year, we're gonna be dealing with a very large situation pretty soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the first time using our timer. That thing is loud, I mean, if that doesn't stop you.
Are we allowed to comment?
Comment at the end. Catherine Flag? Is it justice?
We have comments.
First, give an honor to God. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
We know that Chester is a very vibrant city, and people are gonna want to come in and develop this city. In other communities, before a developer could come in, they held what was called charrettes, where the community was given the opportunity to ask questions and make informed decisions as whether or not this particular project was good for their community. I'm wondering if you'll be able to, are willing to hold charrettes before developers come into the city of Chester, and that give us an opportunity to ask questions and make informed decisions, and even give information to what developers are coming into this city.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Adelaide Evans?
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning. Oh, hold on one second, we're gonna do the reset. You're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. So, I have five questions. I know that normally, questions aren't answered, but these are very important questions. So, I'm not sure if everyone is aware that the work for the Stormwater Authority has started over Memorial Park. My first would like to know, was the city officials notified? My second question is, why weren't the residents in that immediate area notified? What is the actual process for notifying the residents in that immediate area? Do we have a completion timeline, and what are their work hours?
Thank you. Edward Riley. Before you start, let's make sure we get the reset going.
As a resident. Edward Riley, 137 East Parkway, Chester, PA. I'm here today because I got a phone call that we're, we're cutting manning in the Fire Department on the West End, and shutting down an engine company. What you did, not you, I'd be awkward to stare at VJ, but what, what happened was you, you cut our manning from thirteen to twelve. What that does is shut down an engine company. It shuts down Engine 83, that protects the West End of the city. Square 81 is still there in service with four firefighters, but Engine 83 was out of service. Engine 83 was put in service for firefighter protection and protection of the residents, firefighter safety. We use it as a RIT team, a Rapid Intervention Team. Rapid Intervention Team is there to rescue, if a firefighter goes down, God forbid there's a collapse or something. That's, that's what you cut. Not only that, is, all, all the apparatus that we have is QRS certified. And that was something that the city did when they, when they did the study. We have an uptick in EMS calls, hundreds of EMS calls. So, our apparatus is tied up on EMS calls, not able to respond to fire calls. That truck was put there to relieve some of that. That's gone now. What, what bothers me is, there is life safety decisions being made by people who don't live in this city, and that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tyra Starr?
And while we're waiting on the reset of time, and waiting on Ms. Starr, I believe that any residents that didn't get a chance to sign in, will have a chance to sign in to make their public comment at the end, once we get through the list, so... Sorry, Ms. Starr, go ahead.
It's okay. Good morning, everybody, how are you? Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
I am here to actually have Commissioner Gretzky come on up. We want to say thank you to Commissioner Gretzky, on behalf of the Chester City Business District. He has been attending a few of our meetings, and he has been listening to us talk about what we see needed, that is needed for our downtown business district area. And one of the major things that we see that is needed is cleaning up the non-desirables that are starting to, you know, make their way here, and also, just making our city a little bit more safer, so that people, when they come down here to shop, or just be a part of the business district, they feel safe. So, Commissioner Gretzky, we just want to honor you today with a thank you. And a gift card.
So, first off, I'm surprised at this, I appreciate it. The business owners, I've heard vent their frustration here, when we were at council, probably a few months ago. Everyone knows, we do more with less, but it's how I operate my plan and put my plan into play. Another thing, if you'll notice, if you look over at Ethel Waters Park, it's clear. There's no more tents, that air is completely clear. I have to give a special shout-out to Officer Savion, who has been working the detail. I wish I had my stats prepared, but we've served several bench warrants, several citations, and you can slowly see that the word is getting out. Again, it's no secret, everyone in the city has my cellphone number, my email, I have an open-door policy. I will get to you, I promise you, and I do my best to give the city what they need, and that's the proper police services. Thank you.
Ms. Bernadette Raymond?
Hi. First of all, I'm here to thank council and Ms. Rothwell for the services that we complained about, and you took care of. So, in addition to that, the ladies of Beverly Lane, we provided spaghetti salad, donuts, and homemade cheesecake for you, which he put in the room, and for Mr. Gretzky, as long as he gives me my free hoagie. The other problem is, we having a problem also with dogs running loose. And these are big dogs, these are pit bulls, these are dogs that look like wolves. And we're afraid for the children when they're out there playing, because these dogs are just running freely, pooping in your yard, they're not cleaning it up, they're just letting the dogs run. Again, I'm not cleaning up nobody's dog food. I would put it on your step and let you step out on it. I'm not doing it. So, I know there's a law for that. The dog should be on chains, or leased, and they should clean up behind them. And also, I want to say again, if this is the kind of government council that we're gonna be dealing with, I'm all for it. That's why we're showing you the appreciation today. Keep up the good work. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Food. All right, if there's anyone who didn't get an opportunity to sign, just stand behind the mic, give your name and address, you've got three minutes.
Good morning, council. Residents.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Edward Nelson, 1119 Potters Street. Mr. Leitner, I was listening to your report, and it struck me that we said we had financed for the Fourth of July, and I was told that we didn't, because I, I asked a few months ago, inquired about the entertainment, the entertainment for the Fourth of July, because we have supplied the entertainment for the last couple of years. And I was interested to be, to still at least be a part of that. If, if you guys have the funding, let me know, since it's a new regime, how to apply for their services. Because I don't want us to go back to the old entertainment. We have worked some, in the last few years, some good entertainment for all ages to this city. The city's on an uptick, and I would like to keep that there. So, if you can tell me the procedure, and I can, I can work within your budget.
That's not us. That's a cellphone. You've got a minute and twenty-eight seconds.
No, I got five more seconds. That's all. And don't forget, for those who don't know, I want to tell you that we have a fundraiser, raising money for Chester High basketball team. It's a battle over the classes, and made a temp at the Harris Casino. It's a great event for all ages. If you're vending, vending is free. You can contact me, you can look up Shannon Entertainment, all should come out. If you can't come out, you can also donate. I'll take the dollar, it's all for the kids. Forget the messenger, just get the message. You don't have to like me, just give me a dollar, it's for the kids. So, thank you.
I didn't catch your full address, I got the nineteen.
Something about for dinner? I just wanted everybody to like, 1119.
Eleven, thank you. Anybody who's gonna speak, just line up behind the person ahead of you, please.
Good morning. My name is Inez Williams, 2300 West Fourth Street.
Hold on, I can't write that fast. What's the address?
2300 West Fourth Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I'm here again today. I have been here the last three times, asking for a meeting for the landlords, and I have not yet received the date. We had a date, it's been going over a month. We had a date on the 23rd, but of course, 23rd was the election day. And still, no one got back to me. We spoke last week, Mr. Leitner, and I know you were on vacation, but we haven't, before that, I spoke to you, not to you, to Judy, a week before that, she said she would get back, and still, we have not yet got a date for the landlords about the code enforcers.
I will make it happen today.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
You got it.
Okay.
Well, hold on, it, Ms. Judy, is there a date?
Yes, I sent an email that it's tomorrow at 11:00.
I don't think- I didn't get an email from her, never got the email, and if it's tomorrow, we have to reschedule, because that's not enough time for me to let the landlords know we have a meeting, that tomorrow's the next day.
All right, so we'll set up a new date, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll reschedule.
We got the email addresses from, I guess, the sign-in sheets? All right. All right, so let's make sure she has it. She's right over there against the wall. Good morning. All right, you're good to go. I know your name, just say it publicly, and the address.
Jamil Cotton, 725 Land Street, Chester, PA. I'm here to, on two different things, one is, I was informed that, we're doing a ball against violence, June the 8th, and I was just informed that we're not partnering with the city, last year, we partnered with the city, and we're not asking the city for no money, we all, we do it just because we want to do things for the city, as an event for the city. We got just informed that we gotta pay $400 to the city to use, to utilize the park this year. I'm trying to find out, why is that? Or can that be waived if we're doing an event that helped the city and the youth in the city? Also, we will be out, Team Stride will be doing a multi-clean-up with Whitenhurst University, down Sun Village this Saturday, hopefully, everyone could come out. I know some people were saying they don't want to be down Sun Village, but please, 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 come out to Sun Village this, something, this Saturday, we have a whole lot of Whitenhurst students that's coming down there, this, on this Saturday. We will have food down there, we have water rights down there, and we're trying to do a big cleanup that Whitenhurst students definitely want to bring, on cleanness, to the different, on different communities, and we will be doing a lot of different clean-ups within the communities. So, please, 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 come out.
What date?
I believe it's at, I don't have a flyer, but I believe it's at 10 o'clock, nine or 10 o'clock. I'll get information to you.
What day?
This Saturday.
This Saturday is the-
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yes.
Yes.
Twenty-seventh at 10:00 AM?
10:00 AM.
Sun Village Park.
Sun Village Park.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Cotton, can you send a flyer?
Yes, I will be sending a flyer, I just got back on vacation, I was in Jamaica. So, I will, send a flyer, I will have, have y'all the flyers to y'all, and so we put it on the city page, so everybody can know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ready? My question is-
Up, up, up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leanna Jones, 1111 Terrell Street. My question is regarding the residential registration. I know you had a hand in starting this in Allentown. I would like to know, though, why is Allentown paying $75 a year? And their inspection is every five years, but you're asking for $200 a year per property from Chester.
Okay, you can see him after the meeting, and he'll give you the answer. Okay, you can see him after the meeting and he'll give you the answer.
Okay.
God bless you.
Bless you.
Oh, morning.
One second. One moment, please. Name and address.
My name is Carl White, I live 1426 West 11th Street. And I have worked this attention to the mayor at one time, and councilwoman for Jersey West about the monument up there on Conquer Road and the grass cutting. Well, I must say, I talked to you on a Monday, the next day, we was going up there to pray, and someone was up there cutting the grass. I mean, it really do look nice, but while we was there, it was Elder Catherine, myself, and two other people, we picked up trash. We had about four bags of trash, but it's still work to be done up there, and I believe that that is a part of the city of Chester. I feel as though, I don't know all the information, all what is going on about coming in to take the monument from there, but that is our history. And I would like for things to stay the way it is, and I like to keep the grass cut, and the mayor did give me permission that I can plant flowers up there as well, and I'mma do just that. Because it really do look nice, and the people that live across the street from it, they can look out and see how beautiful it looked when the grass is cut, but they was seeing grass coming up high. And so, whoever responsibility it is, it would be really nice if it be kept up. And if, even if people were covered in some rakes and trash bags, there's a fence, a lot of, um, leaves and other trash, I'm willing to do it, that would be a big help because it would beautify that part of the city of Chester.
Thank you. I told you to stand in line, I thought you... I get you, thank you. So, you have the list, can you add his name and address, please?
Yes, I will.
Christopher Dorsey, 2404 Lindsay Street, Chester, PA.
Say your address again, please.
2404 Lindsay Street.
Thank you.
I have a couple, couple of questions. First, I want to thank whoever, I, I, we had tires up there behind my house, I mean, looked like they came off a tractor. And they were, they, I called and they were gone, and I was surprised when I looked out there. So, whoever did it, I want to thank them for that. That's one thing. The other thing is, I just got to know with this, what's that, SBS service? I need to know, how did they get that contract? And I'm not going to be satisfied, because every time I come, I'm going to ask that one question. How did they get that contract? Can somebody tell me?
Is that SBA?
Is that, uh, the SOA? Is that what it is, Stormwater Authority? I really need to know, and I think I'm entitled as a resident of this city that's paying that money. It ain't the money, it's just the issue. I mean, I don't think we should have a board where I have to pay the board, because that's what's happening, really. And I'm not the only one there, it's a lot of people, some people won't speak up, but I'mma always speak, speak up now. So, every time I come here, say, here comes Mr. Dorsey, and I know what he gonna say, because that's what I'mma talk about. And the other thing is, um, you know, I, I, our area is pretty, pretty clean up there, and we try to keep it clean, you know. I'mma talk to the brother back there, and, um, after I talk over here. But I was in Chester Park, I, I just traveled around my area, and I was in Chester Park, and I, I, I noticed that the roof on that, that Wichita, where, where, you know, where they sing or whatever, that roof is actually falling down. And I think we need to just take a look at it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, I think you have...
Mayor, I have a question. I want to know, when did you find out about the decision that the receiver and his team made about the shutting down of, is it Engine 1? Engine 83? Because the council members, we were blindsided, didn't know a decision had been made, which I think is very disrespectful, because any decisions like that should have, we should have had a discussion so that we could talk to you and ask you questions. And I checked my email from Monday evening on up to this morning, never got anything about the situation, you know, we're blindsided. People from the community, they elect us, they know us, they see us, okay? And then they're asking us questions about what has happened, and then concerned about the safety on the west end, you know, because I think when you take down something like that, you're limiting staff, and then they're wondering whether or not there's going to be enough coverage on the west end to protect the citizens. We have senior developments over there, we have businesses, we have a number of residents, and I believe that fire station, the history behind it, that it was put there because there was a problem with getting, um, responses from the east side of town to come over to the west side of town to protect the residents. So, you know, I don't like being blindsided. We're still, you know, although you have the authority, the autonomy to do what you do, we know what the court says, I think we've accepted it, and we're trying to work along with you, but as a courtesy, I think you owe us a courtesy as elected officials, legislators, to let us know when you're making major decisions like that. So, Mayor... So, so, Mayor, I know that nothing's really done unless they come to you, you're the mayor, and I respect that, we all respect that, you should know, but the rest of us should have known as well.
To answer your question, the email was received from our receiver to myself, Chief Leitner, and Mr. Kapoor, April 22nd, that was Monday at 8:27 AM. I can't say that I read it at 8:27, but that's when I was notified.
But then, we didn't get any notification, we have a, a group text too, that Justin takes care of, and I would imagine, I would have thought that if you knew, you two knew, that you would have texted us and let us know something, so that we're not blindsided when residents come up and ask us, what's happening? Are we going to have enough protection? What's going to happen to us on the west end? They're already feeling slighted about a lot of different things. So, this, you know, I, I have questions, I want to know, does this mean we're going to have layoffs? You know, you're taking down something, are there going to be layoffs? Uh, what's going to happen to the coverage? And then, it's my understanding that our fire department, Chester's fire department, we're first responders for other areas, is that not true?
Right.
Okay, so, if you're out on a first response call for another area, and something happens in the west end, huh, are we going to be toast or what?
You're going to be waiting longer, you're going to be waiting for a company from the east side come west.
You're going to get a lot of pushback from the residents on that.
And we heard from the receiver's chief today that when they came on board, there were 11. Unbeknownst to them, it bounced up to 13, and they made the decision on Monday to take it down to 12. That is in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. So, if there are some discussions to be had, they should be had.
Where's the transparency?
The collective bargaining agreement is very transparent.
Okay, but a decision was made Monday, why not come to us and talk to us? You know what I mean? Let us know what's going on.
Well, Mayor, did you support the decision?
Did I support the decision?
Yes.
I don't think it was my decision to support, or not to support, a decision was made by receiver. I received the information that a decision was made by the receiver.
So, I'd like to... So, I'd like to make, um, a general comment, and as well as hear from the receiver if we have a chance. I think that one thing that, um, I learned growing up is, from wiser citizens, is that there's one, there's more than one way to skin a cat. So, I think that, um, what's happening is, the level of transparency wasn't there when this action was taking place. Like, I found out via Facebook, and I'm not, Facebook is not where I would like to receive my information, trust me. So, when I got that information via Facebook, I was highly upset about it. However, I am someone who likes to see things from all aspects. So, on, on regards to what Mr. Kapoor said, I understand the finances that come along with taking care of a city, and like you said, worried about next year, that's extremely important. As a mayor and administration, we should be concerned about the money and how we're taking care of our citizens. However, looking at a larger scale, looking at the bigger picture, we don't ask how much money we need to support our military troops across seas or even in the United States. We don't ask how much money the police departments or other fire departments need when they need staffing. And if this is a conversation that was, that could have been had, we could have had it with other municipalities that our firefighters do serve, Trainor, Chi-Chester, Lower Chi-Chester, those areas where they're assisting full-time to help do their jobs, why are those other municipalities, excuse me, municipalities aren't trying to help the city of Chester? Those are conversations that, as council people, we should be having. We should be talking to the mayor of whoever the case may be, Brook Haven, whatever the case may be, to say, how can we get this assistance? But, we can't do that if we don't even know what's going on. So, I think transparency is a problem, however, I think we should let it be known that we stand with our police department and our fire department 1,000 percent.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. But like I said, at the same time, this is a conversation that needs to be had on a larger scale, because there's more than one ways to get the job done. If we need to assist more, and with more volunteers, or whatever the case may be, to keep that manpower at 13, even though contractual, contractual, yes, contractual, it says 12, I understand that a contract is a legally binding document, but is there a way that we can get around that legally binding document to still support and assist our citizens and our residents? So, I think that's what the general consensus should or could be here, and I think that, Mr. Receiver, as we meet on our Wednesdays at 3, I think that we should broaden our horizon, our conversation, because it's important. And I know that you care as a, not a resident of the community, but as a black man, as a person who has a family, who cares about other people's safety, I know that you care. I know the mayor cares, I know that we all care. So, because we care, let's put that effort forth to show how we care and how we can get this figured out. Because i- it's a problem. So, it's, it's a problem, it's going to continue to be a problem until it's addressed, and I think that we should address it. And I would, and I would like to address it.
I agree.
I agree with you, and I agree that public safety is very important. Uh, someone sent me the message about, um, what's happening, and it was like a smack in the face because I didn't know what was going on, but I support the fire department and our police department, and, uh, we as a city have to do better when it comes to communication. There is no communication, no proper communication. If you got something that Monday, um, we were all here, we could have got an email or a sit-down or something, but I felt like I, I couldn't answer the question from our residents because I didn't know what was going on. Um, that's all I have to say about that. I do want to shout our residents out that are keeping their community clean with the recycling and the sweeping and keeping care of their front of their homes. I ride around, I see it, it looks beautiful. You guys are doing a great job with that. Um, I wanted to talk about, uh, the fencing along Highland Avenue and Concord, it has been completed. Um, there was some follow-up that was given, and they said it was completed when it wasn't, so I made a phone call to PennDOT, and they sent the guys out, and they fixed both of the fencing on, uh, Highland and on Concord, even came back and completed more further down, um, Concord, uh, near the A field. Um, I'm still asking questions about the fencing on 7th Street, uh, the bridge, because it's kind of leaning, I think it was some questions about who owned it, but I will stay on it to see what kind of results we can get about that. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention is that we're having a peace walk on June the 8th, and if anyone would like to volunteer for that, please let me know, um, so that I can sign you up for the peace walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, first I'll say, I do not support the decision to, um, lay off or another engine. Um, we've just seen the data, we've seen the numbers, um, they are responding to hundreds of calls. So, we need to increase manpower, not decrease manpower. So, I do not support that decision. Um, I do stand with you firefighters, and as the rest of council, I knew nothing about the decision, I was not in on the decision-making or had no notice of that decision being made until I seen a post on Facebook. And, and on that post, uh, you know, they talk about, let's go address our elected officials, because we're the people that you elected. However, we were, the elected official wasn't the ones that made the decision. And I'm sorry that we couldn't be more transparent, or they couldn't be more transparent to let us know, so that way we can answer more of your questions. Because the community called me with questions, but I had no knowledge of the, um, situation, so I couldn't answer any of the questions, and I'm sorry for that, that we have this miscommunication in this government, unfortunately. Um, so, I stand with you guys, and it's my hope that we can figure things out and figure out how we can, um, afford to keep that engine, um, up and running, so. And, uh, as far as the SAC, um, I know two people asked about questions for the Stormwood Authority. Um, I would encourage you all to go to the Stormwood Authority Board meetings, and also go to the Stormwood Authority, um, office, they will answer any question you have, they are extremely transparent, uh, with the community. So, if you have some questions, you can go to them, and they'll be more than happy to answer your questions.
With regard to the project, that's who you should be going to, and their number is 610-872-1000. And, um, that's, they have the answers regarding the project.
And since I'm the guy who's being, uh, fingers are pointing to that I didn't communicate this information, as I said, to answer your question, the email was received at 8:27 PM. And as a witness, whoever wants to see this, my calendar for Monday when that came in, I was in an 8 o'clock meeting, a 9 o'clock meeting, a 10 o'clock meeting.
I was in four of the meetings with you, so I know.
There was a 1 o'clock meeting, a 2 o'clock meeting, and a pension meeting at 2:30. I left the building around 4:00, I got to those emails that evening. By the time I saw the email, the Facebook post, Facebook post was put out by whoever put it out. The Facebook post had an impact statement of what this one removed personnel would have. That was not part of the email, it was just saying there'd be one less person. So, that's why you guys didn't get a notice from me or Justin, uh, at all, because by the time that we saw the email, the Facebook post had already come out. So, I, it's virtually impossible to sit in meetings and read email at the same time, let alone respond to them. I think all of us understand the importance of our fire department, I've met all the platoons, these guys know that I respect what they do to the utmost. We have a top-class fire department in the county, well, in the city, obviously, and throughout the county. This is the fire department that everyone else measures themselves up to. I do agree that there needs to be ongoing discussions regarding the decision that was made by the receiver. As council, you, you individually can set up that meeting, have that hearing. have that hearing, you know, with the chief, with the receiver, with the commissioner. So let's do that. And then we can find out the data, the, you know, any information that went into making that decision.
Who do we reach out to to set up the meeting? Because none of us have an administrative assistant.
Oh, just pick up the phone and call someone and set up a meeting?
I think it should be set up in an email, in writing.
Please, set it up. You don't need an administrative assistant. If you want to set up a meeting to talk about this issue, let's set it up. Do you want me to set it up? I'll set it up. Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking that someone set the meeting up for council.
Okay, I'll set up the meeting.
And then, Mayor, you said you got the email Monday. It's Wednesday. We still didn't get an email.
Still haven't gotten one.
But you have the information that I have.
The information from Facebook, no information from you. You got it Monday night. It's Wednesday. You could have sent it on something.
As a result of the decision that was made, an email post, a Facebook post was put out. There was nothing more that I could...
No more public comment.
Give me one second. I'm sorry.
May I ask?
No.
No, because we're having our discussion.
I'm going to say one more comment. Commissioner Shirley, you and I had a friendly conversation on Monday, Monday, excuse me, when I laughed and said, "I'm looking forward to driving one of the fire trucks." And you explained, in New Jersey, I believe, you have to have a CDL in order to operate a fire truck, but that's not necessarily the case in Pennsylvania, X, Y, and Z. Those friendly conversations that we often have as leaders in our community, we can turn those into conversations in which we can come up with a solution. Like I said, Commissioner Shirley, we need volunteer firefighters. You and I can go out in the community together, and I'll find a volunteer firefighter for you, for sure. You and I can take care of that today. If I need to be a volunteer firefighter as well as a city councilperson because I'm serving my community, if anybody has a problem with that, let me know. But I'm happy to do that as well. Like, these friendly conversations that we have can also be conversations in which way we're getting things done that we're not just pointing the fingers at any one person because it's not one person that's responsible for an entire city. We're a community, so we all have to come together to figure this out. So I'm not pointing any fingers. And now do I think the rest of the council are pointing any fingers? However, if something's going to get done, let's get it done ASAP. Because the news comes out and we have to hear about it ASAP from the residents. So the same way we have friendly conversations and we talk and we have each other's personal cellphone numbers, because I give mine out, I'm like the commissioner. Everybody in the city has my number now, unfortunately. They call me, and I'm fine with that. But I'm saying, because I'm very transparent, I want people to call me. Let's figure out how we can get things done and taken care of so that way problems don't happen because the city doesn't need any more problems. We have enough already, so let's come up with some solutions to get some things done. So Commissioner, I'm willing to work with you right after this meeting so we can figure out something. Mr. Receiver, we're going to talk today because it's Wednesday, and we're good. So things are going to happen. So to the community, things are going to get done, but pointing fingers aren't going to get us anywhere. So that's all I have to say.
Are we finished with this topic? Any other comments? Very good. To Ms. Catherine Flag, you had mentioned Shurets before developers come. That sounds a little strange to me. If the developers haven't come, I don't know how you're going to make comments on work that developers are going to do in the future. But I encourage you to check the website for scheduled planning and zoning meetings. That's the opportunity for the public to have every comment that they want to make. Mr. Nelson, could you please have a seat? Both gentlemen, please, have a seat. Have a seat, please. You're not a director. Please have a seat. Please have a seat. No, well, then you have to leave if you're not having a seat. Have a seat. Mr. Jamil Kotman, have a seat, please. Mr. Nelson, please have a seat. That's what the seats are for. Please have a seat. Can you have a seat in the audience? This is for directors over here. Thank you. Thank you. Please have a seat. That's what the arrangement is for. Thank you. Ms. Evans, I think the answer provided by Council Lady West? Is the activity that's going on in Memorial Park? She's not... Oh, there she is. I'm sorry. Surprised me when I went by yesterday, two days ago, and saw the digging yesterday. Yeah. Many of us aren't happy about that. Tyra Starr, thank you for the recognition of the Police Commissioner. We are hearing you. Public safety is very important, especially on Avenue of the States. There's one term that you said, "nondesirables," that kind of rubbed me the wrong way. But we do have a lot of people coming into our town that are migrants. People are being dropped off in our town. Some of them are unhoused. They are certainly taking up resources across the city, particularly in the homeless shelters, particularly in the feeding ministries. They're running out of food at a rate that they've never run out of food before. It's something that we have to absolutely address. Bernard Raymond is talking about dogs, animal control. And when we talk about the need and we saw it in the chart of people that we need to hire, people we needed to identify, animal control is certainly one of them. The dogs that look like wolves. I've seen that white one out there. I understand it's a coyote. And he got taken care of. He's in rescue. Thank you. And we do have some "Leash Your Dog" signs around, you know, certain parks. It is important to have your dogs on a leash. So those of you who are within earshot, please, don't let your dogs run freely throughout the parks or the neighborhoods. Leash your dogs. Clean up after them. Mr. Ed Nelson, you heard from the receiver that special funds are used for fireworks. It had made no mention to entertainment. Anas Williams, meeting with landlords, I encourage you to work with Ms. Judy Richards to get a new date. I don't think that date was out a while ago for the 25th, which is tomorrow. I'm sorry you guys weren't notified. Ms. White, thank you for the comments. The monument on Concord Road, that's a tricky situation because the land that those monuments are on, I found, isn't even city land. It's land that belongs to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, but we have been cutting it, so we, in effect, own it. Thank you so much for putting flowers up there. I am not going to discourage anybody, and you don't have to ask me. If you want to beautify a park, a playground, your front yard, or your neighbors, put a flower up. And to Mr. Dorsey, Stormwater Authority is an authority. It's not a contract that was bid on. It was an authority that was established by the city of Chester. And that concludes the comments in response to the public comments. Anybody else would like to share?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
Mr. Kotman said...
He's talking about comments that his issue wasn't addressed at Sun Village Park on Saturday.
Oh. In order to get a permit for a park, there's a permit fee for using our parks, playgrounds, community rooms. I can't imagine what the problem is. Most people who do reserve our parks, playgrounds, is for a particular purpose, whether it's children, whether it's family, whether it's a special event. If there's an event that you would like to partner with the city, that would have to be done, you know, with the city. So, you know, I don't know what happened in the past, how these arrangements were made. But we're being pretty firm on the fact that if you want to use our facilities, you have to fill out a permit form and pay the fee. That's what covers the costs to cut the grass, have personnel out there to pick up trash. It's...
It was two visits weekend, and neither one had a fee. So I'm just trying to clarify.
Well, I don't know anything about that. I'm just telling you that... Okay, so we're clear on that? Yes. Come up to the mic. Come on.
But I submitted to you after you read the document to me if that was...
All right, so after we're done today, just come up, put your phone number on here, and I'll read it and get back to you. I'm not sure what the Shuret piece is. The one thing that wasn't commented on, though, that happened last... That happened on Sunday around 3:00 p.m. is there was a shutdown of Covanta incinerator. They had an electrical problem, PICO problem. They shut them down. I did get a couple of calls that there was a lot of noise, a lot of steam being released down there. I went down there to see it for myself yesterday just to find out what progress was being made, what the issue was. They are bringing the facility back up in phases. They do have electricity. The pollution controls are back on. Three of the six boilers are on. And as they go through the phases, they'll determine if there are other problems. But they are receiving truck traffic again. And the facility is back up and running at half-power. I have requested of them to give me an update by 3 o'clock every day. If there's anything substantial that they're reporting, I will share it with others. But they do anticipate being back at full power by the end of the week. So for those of you who heard that loud noise on Sunday, that's exactly what it was. They were shutting down. I can imagine that in instances like that, there's going to be some violations from the EPA. We talked about some of those fines and fees that we get in Mr. Lightner's presentation. Looking forward to see how the EPA rules on what happened there. Mr. Solicitor, you've been pretty quiet today. You have anything to share with us?
Nothing other than very well-run meeting.
Thank everyone for showing up, City Council. Thanks all of you for watching. This is how we conduct city business, and I think we're doing a good job of it. So thank you, Council. Thank you, citizens. Thank you, visitors. Thank you for your reports. They were excellent. This meeting is adjourned.